May we have the roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Weaver, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join with me in our flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Tomorrow's the anniversary of the birth of one of America's most outstanding cultural icons, folk singer Woody Guthrie. Most noted for writing the ballads of the working Americans during the period of the Great Depression and the Dust Bowl, his songs became a part of our lives and our American culture. Woody Guthrie once said, in a style that was uniquely his, that, quote, "Life has got a habit of not standing hitched. You got to ride it like you find it. You got to change with it. If a day goes by that you don't change some of your old notions for new ones, that is just about like trying to milk a dead cow," end quote. Let us pray for us to live our lives so that our notions move forward like the spirit of the American pioneer has over many generations in our great land. Let us pray that we will continue to be blessed with those tools that no other land and no other nation in this world has been blessed with on this planet, from redwood forests to the Gulf Stream waters, as Guthrie would say. We pray that our nation, our state, and our city grow stronger, and we work harder to make it so with wisdom, patience, and love for one another. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the July 13, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, July 8, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and the next item?
At 3:00, a presentation and appointments is 3A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of July 20, 2010.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for July 20, there are no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency also, there are no business agenda items. We do have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency. Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, this is supplement to the proposed Ninth Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the central Glendale Redevelopment Project area. And, public hearing, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, this is regarding the final approvals for the proposed Ninth Amendment. That evening for the City Council meeting, we have a couple of consent items. Director of Community Services and Parks, approval to award Federal Workforce Investment Act funds to the Glendale Youth Alliance, and the City of Burbank, and the Department of Social Service Funds to the Glendale Youth Alliance. Under action items, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, California State University Northridge of Engineering and Computer Science, this is the Honors Cooperative Internship Program. Director of Information Services, agreement with the City of Burbank to mutually share data center space for backups in the event of disaster recovery. City Attorney, this is regarding the denial and findings regarding 1650, Hasbeth Lane, conditional use permit case. And we have one hearing, Director of Public Works, appeal of GNS Transit Management, Inc., this is the City Cap. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item?
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments? Comments? No. Aren't you going to tell us where you went this weekend?
Actually, I want to talk about the Veterans, California Department of Veteran Affairs. I had the opportunity to tour their Veterans Home in West LA, the VA grounds there in Westwood. It's a Cal-Vet housing project for disabled vets and other vets in needs of services. They did a tremendous job, 396 units, very well done. And as I mentioned earlier in the day, been to the VA many times in my life, and this was, I think, the most positive visit I've ever made. Brand-new housing for California's veterans. What I forgot to mention at this afternoon's meeting was that there are also a number of jobs there, administrative jobs, clerical jobs, maintenance jobs, et cetera, et cetera. And they would give preferences to vets in terms of the employment. So let me find a number that people can call and see if they can find a job. There's plenty of van pools that go to Westwood, so even transportation there shouldn't be too much of a problem. But one of the numbers that they can call that would be a referral to employment would So in addition to the opportunity to perhaps live in one of these units, maybe people watching at home, or have relatives or friends that could conceivably apply for jobs at the, it's called the Cal-Vet Veterans Home of California, and that's in West LA at the VA campus. Thank you, Ms. Nigarian.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Congratulations to Spain.
Oh, yeah, my cousins watching on the Internet in Spain, actually, I should do that. Excuse me, one more comment. Viva España. And I did quite a bit of boasting with my cousins from Spain about the USA and everything we were going to do in the World Cup. Well, let me say that in four years, let's see who's the world champ. Thank you, Ms. Friedman.
Be sure smiling the next day.
Well, this last weekend, Councilmember Quintero and myself went to a conference for the Independent Cities Association, which is the cities in the Los Angeles region that are independent cities, meaning that they have their own police and fire. And surprisingly enough, there's dozens of cities that fit that criteria. There's a lot of cities in this region, the region being loosely defined outside of the boundaries of just the county. And it's a great venue for us to go to, to meet with other elected officials, to talk about issues that are mutual to all of our cities. We talk a lot about public safety issues, advances, and all kinds of city issues. There are pretty much two days' worth of back-to-back seminars. But the one thing I wanted to mention that was really on everybody's minds, and a lot of discussion, was about pension reform and about the challenges that are facing all of the cities in terms of meeting their pension obligations to the city employees. A subcommittee was formed, which I'm going to be sitting on, to really delve into the subject, to see if, as a region, the cities in Los Angeles can find ways of cooperating to try to deal with this issue and deal with these challenges that are really facing all the cities in the state, and not just our state. But I found out that Illinois is, you know, facing these issues, New Jersey, states all over the country, it's really the same issue. So there's no progress to report yet, except that we have formed this committee, and it's something that's seriously on the minds of all elected officials across the state of California. And as there's news to report, I'll be back to report whatever progress that we make. Thank you very much.
Just briefly, I missed last week's meeting, and I know it went very well. I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Weaver for taking over the reins and sitting through the appeal on that one property. And for those of you out there, I did not recuse myself on this item. I was, in fact, at the moment, a visitor to the city of Yerevan, Armenia. And it was not intended as an official or an official visit, I guess would be the word for it, but it soon developed into that when people heard that the mayor of Glendale was there. I was literally mobbed with TV interviews and newspaper interview requests and radio and meetings. And before I knew it, I was meeting with the president of Armenia, and the prime minister of Armenia, and the president of the parliament of Armenia, and the mayor of Yerevan, and the mayor of the central region, and the Gatholikos, the Armenian equivalent to the Pope. They are very, you know, because of the large population of Armenians in Glendale, they are very much interested in everything that we do here in Glendale. They're interested in how their relatives are doing, they're interested in our city budget, they want to know what we spend most of our budget items on. When I told them our budget, they, you know, they gasped, and they said, "Well, what do you spend it on?" And then I, you know, ticked off the number of things. They are still a very warm, warm people who asked me to extend a warm welcome to my colleagues on the dais, as well as staff. I spoke to them a little bit about our downtown region, and I have Mr. Hagani in mind, and perhaps Mr. Zern, to extend some of their ideas at the appropriate time to them. It has changed a lot since the last time I was there, which was with the city delegation before I was a council member. Mr. Starbird was there, and Zizat Ayad, and Mr. Quintero was the mayor. And there were some school board members, and some college board members, and other staff support. It has changed incredibly in the last seven years. It has really become a vibrant European, truly European-style city, where everyone is wearing their, you know, Sunday best, if you will. They're out strolling in the evenings till late, late at night, till 3, 4 in the morning, children, elderly, young couples, and groups of, you know, boys and girls as well. And it is really quite a change since the last time we were all there, seven years ago. And I'm very happy to see that, and I'll hopefully have some more news in the future on that, and we can see what sort of relationship we can develop with them at the time. My son liked it so much, and I was a little, you know, concerned about my older son, Alexander. I wasn't sure how he would take to a foreign country, let alone Armenia. And he was very impressed, he wants to spend next summer out there. And he swam with the junior national swim team, and spent a few nights with some families out there, and really was an excellent trip. And they're, they, you know, they know, the officials know what's, are aware of what's going on in Glendale, and they wanted to know why I came by myself, and why didn't I bring my colleagues and all that.
Why didn't you?
I paid for the trip myself, by the way. No city funds were spent in sending Mr. Nigarian out there. So hopefully, we can develop some relationships with them, and we'll talk about that at a later date.
Any other comments? Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, next item on the agenda is consent items, including minutes following routine and may be acted upon by one motion. And any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Quintero. Second, Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, let's take roll.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Right.
Mayor Nigarian?
Yes.
Next item would be oral communications.
This is the three-minute portion of oral communications, where you're invited to address the council and the city on matters of public interest and general announcements as well. Todd Hunt, followed by Elizabeth Traynor? I'm sorry, you're next, Elizabeth. Are you together? Oh, okay. Oh, bring your associates, Mr. Hunt.
Well, good evening, Mayor Nigarian, councilmember staff. My name is Todd Hunt, I am here to say a few words on behalf of National Night Out. We have Officers Zakarian, Sergeant Gilkerson, and I'm sorry, and Jackie. And Margaret, hey, Margaret. Anyhow, we're here to talk about National Night Out. This coming next month, August 3, Tuesday night, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, is the 27th Annual National Night Out. And last year, over 36 million people participated in National Night Out events throughout the country. Here in Glendale, we had hundreds, not quite millions. We're working on that. What we want to try to do is encourage the public to get involved, and to find ways to meet their neighbors on that night, to really try to enhance and work on a sense of community, and really getting to know each other. And the purpose of National Night Out is to really work with the police departments for crime prevention and awareness, and really try to foster a sense of community, and really trying to say, "Okay, we're taking back our city," and it's the community that's doing that with the assistance of the police. But this is our event. The police are a great resource for us, but this is something that we, as citizens, need to do. There's a website that's been set up, it is www.glendalenno.com, which has a map that shows a number of events that are taking place already, and we're encouraging other people to step up and start their own event. Do you want to say a few words about your event, or are you good?
I will, I'll just introduce myself. My name's Jackie Muchler, and I am new to Neighborhood Watch and National Night Out. Very pleased to be able to take part this year. Our block is just getting started, just trying to drum up the participation and the interest. We've had some problems up in the north area of Glendale, and we want to stop it now before it gets out of hand. And so that's what I'm here to do, and hopefully, my neighbors will join me in North Glendale. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, my name's Margaret Hammond. I'm here kind of speaking on behalf of the group that we have the event down at Pacific Park. And we have already, we worked, Lenora did, and I, but sent out about 300 to 400 invitations, actually, to people in the neighborhood who signed up last year, that we got their names for Neighborhood, you know, to do Neighborhood Watch and that kind of thing. And hopefully, that the neighbors, and it seems that they are kind of getting together and doing things together. But we're having our event, and we do need volunteers. We're going to have music, and entertainment, and food, and we need volunteers, and we need donations of food and money for all the events, I believe, that we can encourage people to get together and have either a block party, but in our case, it's going to be a big block party at the Pacific Park. Thank you.
Thank you. And will you come back and remind us, and give us all the locations? Were all those green?
Matt, do you want to make sure the map?
Those are all locations?
Hopefully, again, the people will try to set up their own event, and we'll add them.
Actually, John, why don't you say it into the mic, so people?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and city staff, John Gilkerson from the Community Policing Unit. We did set up this website through the city, and every one of those green pins represents a proposed location. Actually, someone has said that they will have an event. And if you take your mouse and the cursor and go over each pin, you can click and get a general idea. We didn't give specific addresses, but you can get an idea. There's a 3,500 block of Santa Carlotta, there's an event happening there. So if you live in that community, you can click on who to contact, you get the lead officer's link to the lead officer's email, you click on that, and it sends an email straight to the lead officer in the police department who's responsible for that area, so that they can then coordinate with you and the person having the event in your neighborhood.
The URL?
I'm sorry, yeah, it's glendalenno.com, N-N-O for National Night Out. We went through a few addresses, and a lot of them were taken, but glendalenno worked out, so.
Thank you. Thank you, officers, thank you, Mr. Hunt. The next speaker is Elizabeth. Please correct my mispronunciation of your name.
That's okay, everybody pronounces it incorrectly. I respond to everything, so that's fine. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and members of the audience. I'm Elizabeth Chismir, and I'm with Pathachief Glendale. Mayor, I know your family has an affiliation with us because your son and your wife were coming over to serve breakfast.
Waffle makers.
Yeah, waffle makers. So I know that you're familiar with...
They make me waffles, but they volunteer...
It was phenomenal, we really enjoyed them, and it was just a treat every Thursday, until Alex moved on to other things, but we hope to have him back sometime. Anyway, I'm here about National Night Out. This is our flyer, I'm sorry I didn't bring extra copies, and I'd like to pass it around for you. We're very excited about this, from what I understand, it's our first involvement. We have a little bit of a different component, because we're not in a residential area, we're in a commercial area. We're smack dab in the corner of St. Los Feliz Boulevard and San Fernando Road. So what we've done is we've gone around to our business neighbors and talked to them, and invited them to come, because we want to have our party in our parking lot. And we're inviting all of them to come, we want to have food and games and fun, but most of all, we want to spend some time talking about how to support each other. Although we don't live there, we do business there, we, in our case, have residents that stay there on a transitional basis for two months at a time. We have a very vested interest in providing safety for them, for knowing our neighbors, so that they can report to us or we to them if there's any activities that are not desirable for anybody that's working there. We want to make it a very safe environment when people are walking. As you know, there are homeless people down in South Glendale, and they also are exposed to all of the elements while they're out there, and we want to help, at least while they're out there, well, until we find housing for them, to be as safe as humanly possible when they're sleeping in the park, or on a bench, or in their car even. So we certainly take this very, very seriously, but we want to have a lot of fun in communicating to everyone, that we want to be partners with our business neighbors, and invite them all to come and join us for a night of fun and information. Am I done? Oh, no, I have a few minutes, because I wanted to speak a little bit about Pathachief Glendale. I know, Mayor, you're familiar, but I wanted to let everybody here know that we are an emergency shelter, and we provide transitional housing for up to two months to residents who can qualify to stay there. And we have a criteria, which is to pass a background screening test, to be free of drugs and alcohol, to be able to save up to 80% of whatever revenue stream they may have coming in. Not everybody does have a revenue stream, or income, or benefits that would help them to save. But we do have people who work, who are working poor, who are not able to provide housing because of the expense associated with getting into a housing program. So what we do is we identify whatever needs our new residents may have, we give them supportive services such as employment, mental health, substance abuse. We send, we give them all of the resources that are available to us to help them transition into more permanent housing at the end of the two-month period. So it's not about, here's a bed, figure it out, you've got two months. It's about, here's a bed, let's figure it out together, we can do it in two months. So we're very proud of the work that we all do there. I'm very proud of the people that I work with, and very proud of our residents who work to bring themselves up and out into independence and self-sufficiency, and thank you so very much, I appreciate your time. Good night.
Thank you. Leon Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor Nigarian, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayor, and I'm here for the library, and for the friends at the library. And hopefully, on the screen, you will see information about the new library card designs. We are issuing new library cards to anybody who wants to turn in their old cards, or anybody wants to use their heads, so to speak, in mind, and come to the library, and join the library, and use all our facilities. Now, these cards are special because, first of all, one of them is a picture of Albert Einstein visiting the Glendale Rose Float many years ago, the other is a picture of Bob Hope.
Is Mr. Weaver behind him in the picture?
I don't think so. I wasn't even, not even imagination, my parents have.
Anyway, that's really something. In 1932, Albert Einstein came to Glendale and visited the lady who was in charge of her rose bowl float, who I'm sure Dave Weaver doesn't know. Anyway, we also have Bob Hope, who came to Glendale, invited by the Glendale News Press, with his entourage of young, beautiful ladies. Then we had Bob's Big Boy in the Glendale Float, you remember that?
I wrote in that one.
There you go. And then we had, in 1930, we had the airport in Glendale that a lot of people forgot about or never heard of, we're having that as one of the cards. And you go to one of the libraries, either the central or the branch, there's a special number on the back of the card you will get, and it'll give you special access through the Glendale various services that we provide, which are very extensive, and they're not only historical, but also current things. So that's the library card design. We ask everybody to take advantage of that and explore it. And as long as you're going to go to the Glendale Central Library sometime soon, on the 29th of July, Thursday, 7 o'clock, Central Auditorium, we will have Chef Leslie Bilderberg. Now, Chef Leslie Bilderberg is famous, and unless you're interested in cooking, don't listen to the rest that I have to say, but she is, she went to Navy ships to teach them how to cook, she's been a columnist, she's written a series of books called The Idiot Series, and she's also been columns in The Times and other magazines. She's famous for fancy cooking, she's a certified master baker. And so I guess we don't have her on the screen, but I have these flyers if anybody wants them as you leave. I want to quickly remind everybody that the Children's Teen and Adult Summer Reading Program is still going on. You go to any library, get involved with that, and that'll be over August 14, so we urge you to take advantage of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think Jackie Muchler already addressed us with Mr. Hunt. Okay. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communication, so I will close this portion and move on to the next item.
Next item on the agenda, 8A is action items, 8A is city manager regarding request from the Kiwanis Club of Glendale for cosponsorship of the 6th Annual Kiwanis Club Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash. At 8A1 is a motion cosponsoring 6th Annual Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash.
Thank you. Who will help us with this item?
Where's the duck?
Zizat Ayad with my office. I understand the duck is still migrating, soon to land in Glendale. Zizat?
Mayor Nigarian, councilmembers, we have received a request from our committee regarding the duck splash for this coming year. The event is going to be held on October 23, and it's going to be held at Verdugo Park. And the Kiwanis requested from the city council to cosponsor the event, as they have done for the last four years. The total cost that will apply to the city is $2,060, and that will be for renting the park and the use of our facilities and the staff in the park. So if you have any questions, I know we have Vic here with us, that he would like to address council and talk about the event, and give you some information about it.
Just one thing, I think Mr. Starbird meant to refer to you as Mrs. Mullins, not Zizat Ayad.
I, I'm used to it by now.
And again, I always liked your former name better, anyway, so.
Strike the record, it's Mullins.
I've kind of refused to make progress on that.
It's going to take a while for my name to be called right. It's okay.
Yeah. I've always felt Ayad was much more exotic than Mullins, so.
You're in trouble still.
All right. If you have any questions for me, or otherwise, Vic would like to address, sure, go ahead.
Please come forward, Mr. Muchler.
Thank you very much, Mayor Nigarian, members of the city council staff. We appreciate the partnership we have had with the city of Glendale over the course of this event, which has raised a net of over $350,000 for the many participating nonprofit organization schools and various other agencies. And we appreciate the fact that our contract with the game the Duck Race Company provides for a 30-mile radius, which with our centralized location is virtually the whole county, and we now have, as of about a week ago, a new nonprofit that would like to participate and make it their signature project, and that's the Boys and Girls Clubs of America Los Angeles County Alliance, which is 27 clubs serving the county. And we feel this can become, as we thought originally, the largest race in the country, and a lot of people flocking to Glendale. We look forward to another exciting, profitable, fun... We look forward to another exciting, profitable, fun event and increasing the, we still have openings for sponsors, for nonprofit organizations who would like to add it to their fundraising repertoire, as well as we will have increased media this year. So we hope all of that is beneficial to Glendale, as well as the fact that well over the cost of the city is our contributions during the year to the library for our Glendale Kiwanis Read Loud Program, to the Cops for Kids, and so many other programs that we find extremely valuable and that we enjoy supporting. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So for those that aren't familiar with it, this is a series of duck races in a lake created in Verdugo Park. And there are financial gains to be made if you duck. A duck that you purchase is, is it one duck each race or a couple that you pull each race?
We have the preliminary heats because our Lake Glendale built-for-the-day can accommodate about 8,000 ducks. We hope this year to exceed the 30,000 that we've contracted for. So we have multiple heats. And then on the last race, the ducks are, go into a clear plastic tube and pulled out. They have numbers on the bottom that match the database assigned numbers for those who adopt ducks either online or with the adoption papers. And there will be at least five cash prizes. The first prize the past three years has been $10,000, we're hoping. And it's actually through the efforts of the Boys and Girls Clubs. We hope to have a new Toyota this year from the Dealers Association. We're still working on that, but it's a lot of fun and all the proceeds do benefit charitable organizations and Glendale and neighboring communities.
And there's food throughout the day and booths and information on different organizations and groups within the city. So it's a, it's a fun way to spend the morning in Verdugo Park. You might even get wet a little bit.
Well, we encourage particularly a lot of the kids whose organizations are participating to help with the golden retrievers getting the ducks out of the lake. Yes.
Golden retrievers. Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. 8A1.
8A1. Let's take roll, please. Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
In hopes that people will flock to Glendale. Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to reverse course, Mr. Kasakian. If you could recall item six.
Well, item six is Oral Communications. We had one announcement card that was submitted.
So let's reopen item six for Myrna Stanley.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian. My name is Myrna Stanley and I have to tell you, this is the first opportunity I've had to see your new home and it's gorgeous. I really like it. And the tile downstairs and the foyer is beautiful. I am here to announce that my homeowners association, the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association, will be holding a fundraiser on July 24th to raise funds for the military recognition banners that are hanging along Glendale Avenue. We need more funding to get them up quicker. We'll have entertainment, a light dinner will be served. And I'm going to give you a phone number to call. The event will be held at my home and I'm not going to give you the address at this point, only because we're really encouraging RSVPs. I really need that. So if you could call 241-1856. Even if you can't attend and you would like to make a donation, call that number and we'll give you the information where to send your donation. We'll have entertainment. There's three women who dress and sing exactly like the Andrews Sisters. We'll be there and we'll have a hero's table and we'll have as many portraits of the military that are now serving from Glendale in Iraq and Afghanistan, including Corporal Barbosa Flores, who it's going to be a year we lost him. It was a year, July 11th. And I know Councilman Quintero, you were there at Forsland. So we hope everybody comes. This is a very worthy cause. And again, the number is 241-1856. And thank you.
Thank you. Back to the regular order, Mr. Kasakian.
8A is Director of Public Works regarding increase in AB 939 fees to private refuse haulers. 8B1 is a resolution increasing AB 939 fees.
Thank you. Mr. Starber?
Yes, I'll go to Mr. Zern, Director of Public Works for the Staff Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a request and recommendation to increase what we call our AB 939, a gross receipts fee that we assess to private refuse haulers in the city to help offset the costs of waste diversion and recycling that we're required to do under the Integrated Waste Management Act of 1989. That act, when it was implemented, was essentially an unfunded mandate, but it did have a provision that allowed us to assess this fee to create a more equitable situation when it came to covering the cost for the mandated diversion, which was a minimum of 50%, a number that we have to continue to maintain each year. As you have seen in the report, the calculation allows us to defer the same percentage of our recycling and diversion costs as the firms are doing business in the city. In this particular case, private haulers collect about 55% of the total tonnage generated in the city and therefore we're recommending that they pay 55% for the waste diversion fees and thus we're requesting an increase from 15% to 20% to cover those costs. Total cost or total revenue generated off this, again, a gross receipts fee is 1.4 million proposed. Again, just to remind everyone, this allows us, private haulers who come into the city who are able to generate revenue but don't have to participate in the mandatory programs. If we didn't have this fee, then the 45% of our residents who, or the 45% of the waste generated by our other residents and our clients would have to foot the entire bill. So it is a matter of fairness and equity. And that's my report in a nutshell. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Not on the paper motion.
Margaret?
Roll call, please. I'm sorry?
There's a speaker on the.
Oh, Margaret Hammond. Hi. Okay. She'll pass on that. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
9C is Director of Public Works regarding Brand Boulevard Maintenance District Number One for fiscal year 2010-2011. That's C1's resolution determining the special assessment rate.
Thank you. And Mr. Howard, you reminded me that this should properly be announced as a public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it was noticed as a public hearing to the business owners on Brand and as such, it should be handled as a public hearing, so you can certainly open the public hearing and invite anyone who wants to speak on the matter to submit a card.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at this time and go to Mr. Starber.
And I'll go to Mr. Zern, Director of Public Works, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our annual vision or calculation of our Brand Boulevard Maintenance Assessment. I stumbled there with the calculation or revision because there really is no calculation or revision. We're maintaining the same rate, which is $10.25 per lineal foot of frontage for each of the businesses that are in the brand, the front brand Boulevard. This includes both the general maintenance that's provided, which is trash collection, street sweeping, trash, parks, maintenance services on the street. And it does also include the holiday decorations, which under our previous resolution, the businesses fund the entire cost of that. We have not changed this in quite some time, mainly when we started the construction, reconstruction of Brand Boulevard. It seemed to, we didn't feel that it was equitable for us to begin to increase that fee. Since that time, we've been evaluating a different structure for this fee. We've been working with the redevelopment agencies. You may recall, there was discussion about creating a broader business district in that area that would include possibly police services and other services. So we've been working both with assistance from outside consultants and the different departments to adjust that. So in the meantime, we're just proposing that we maintain the cost as it's assessed, has been assessed. We have received no written opposition to this. And Mr. Howard alluded to the fact this was noticed and has a public hearing and notices sent out to all of the affected businesses on June 30th. And be happy to answer any questions.
You and Margaret, did you want to address this one? No? Okay. I did. I opened it right at the very, right at the back. Mr. Quintero?
Mr. Zern, I have a question. Some of the businesses south of Colorado, there along Brand, in terms of holiday lighting, does the city do anything?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, not south of Colorado. The parameters go as far as Colorado to that southern edge. In fact, even we've recalculated on when the Americana was constructed. That is not included either as they take care of all of their own maintenance and decorations for the holiday season.
Well, I know it wouldn't be part of this package since obviously they're paying fees for their particular neighborhood, but a couple of the restaurants, Palad included, mentioned that during the holidays, it's kind of forgotten. So I don't know if we could do something, maybe not to the extent that we do in North Brand, but something to keep the flow of season's greetings.
Mr. Mayor, if I can. A number of the odd leaders have raised the same question in our last meeting with them. Part of the difficulty is the electrical circuits, the electrical that's available down there. The redevelopment agency is working with Public Works and looking at the cost and opportunities to do some additional lighting down south of Colorado. So we'll be looking at that.
All right. Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for the roll call. Let me ask for a motion first. I'm sorry.
I'll move 8C1.
Second. Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Let's move to item nine.
Nine, under hearings again. At 9A is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding approval of the final engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2010-2011. 9A1 is a resolution approving the engineer's annual levy report for the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2010-2011. Net 9A2 is a resolution ordering the levy and collection of the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2010-2011.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Go to Mr. Starber.
And I'll go to Mr. Elliott, Director of Finance. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the issue before you tonight is approval of our annual North San Fernando Landscaping Maintenance District. The total assessment for the district is $40,000. It's assessed in five different zones, depending on parcels, and basically shuffled out based on the amount of landscaping and quantity of acreage. So it's all divided up and noticed or shown in the engineer's report. Additionally, members from Willdan, the consultant that prepares this, are here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? I have a card from the public. I'd like to invite Mr. Bayako up to speak.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, general public, my name is Louis Bayako. I live in Glendale. Own a piece of property on San Fernando Road. When San Fernando Road to North San Fernando Road was redone, I had a special tax put on my tax papers. And then we had a vote, three different areas, two of San Fernando Road and one was Disney, if we wanted our taxes raised or we were opposed on it. I was the only one to witness the counting. Looked like it was against raising taxes, but lo and behold, out comes an envelope with Disney and of course, our taxes got raised. Last year, I paid for San Fernando Road $59.11. I really don't get any benefit out of that. We had trees planted. I complained that nobody took care of them, nobody watered them. The watering system is a haven for mosquitoes, so they don't come and uncappen and put water in it. I seen a guy once or twice in a pickup truck, drop a hose and walk away. Some of the, some of the areas have mats, so the people can't trip. They don't step on the mat underneath the trees. I asked to have one put in front of my building and they says, no, you don't qualify. Before I came to this meeting tonight, I went down San Fernando Road. I just checked out one tree and the tree has growth from the ground up and you don't know it's a tree. It looks like a wild bush. Nobody maintains this stuff, so why are we paying taxes? And then they want to raise the taxes again on just a group. I don't pay a special tax for the tree in front of my house, so I shouldn't have to pay taxes down there for the trees the city wants to put in that aren't maintained. If they were maintained, I'd say, well, that's life, you know, we have to live with it. Let's see here. I have two increases. Now, this will be the third. Sweeping of the street, I guess the guy comes down through between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m., but it doesn't go near the curb. I've gotten spikes in my tires, screws. The curb isn't swept. The alley, I watched the sweeper go through the alley down the middle. Doesn't go up and down the sides. And it's pretty hard for the sweeper though because there's dips on either end. I have a bell system, the telephone company has a vault behind my building and it's sinking because semi-trucks go over that alley. I reported that. They come out, put a little tar about four years ago. It's gone.
You could wrap it up, Mr. Bayako.
I don't mind paying taxes, but I'd like to see some fruit from the taxes. So anything we can do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So how do you respond to that, Mr. Zern? Is there a contractor that does that for us or is that our employees?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the new plantings we had on the railroad track side of it, we had a two-year maintenance agreement. So that we watch as a contractor maintains that. The trees that went on the other side when we redid San Fernando Road are under our care. We've had, we had two things that occurred there. One is we have a lot of work, as you know, with the bridge and some other things and some of those areas have been not maintained while the construction's going on and we'll get back to those. The other is we had a disease go through that area and we lost about 45 trees. So in the process of trying to replace those, our urban forester, our forestry experts have recommended we do that at a certain time of the year. So we have continued to look at replacing those trees. There was a comment made about a pad, which I believe is the recycled rubber tree wells that we experimented with. It has nothing to do with not qualifying for them. We only bought four of them. We put them in. They're working fairly well and if they, if we find that they do hold up and achieve the goal we were hoping for, we'll expand that to all of the wells in the area. So stay tuned for that one. But I will, if we have some sucker growth, which is what the gentleman was describing as the bush that grows out of the bottom, I'll have somebody go out and look at that right away.
Okay. And I don't have your address, Mr. Bayako, but if you could, on the side, give that to Mr. Zern. We can make sure we're looking at the correct block or a series of blocks.
Mr. Mayor, there was another comment about sweeping and we do sweep that area probably between 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning because of the heavy traffic in that area. That gives us the best shot at it. We do both the storefront curb and the curb on the medians, if there are any. We sweep as in any other place in the city that isn't posted to the best of our ability based on what's parked there. So if we were able, if we're not able to get to the curb because of parked vehicles, that sometimes can leave debris there. But generally, we keep that street pretty well, pretty well swept. There is a lot of traffic on there and a lot of industrial traffic.
Mr. Mayor, let me suggest we have somebody from Steve's staff contact Mr. Bayako and try to see if we can address some of the issues he's raised here this evening. We'll follow up with him.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't have any other cards from individuals wishing to address the council. Comments from council? I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 9A1 and 2.
Sorry? Sorry. Okay. Yeah, I have your card for oral communications, so this is only on the assessment district. There was a motion and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Let's move on, Mr. Kasakian.
Mr. Mayor and council, we're Mr. Mayor and council, we return now to oral communications, where discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision as City Manager/Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. The first speaker's Charles Hooker, followed by Bob Seer.
My name is Charles Hooker, second generation Glendale. I live in the Verdugo Woodlands, off of Verdugo Road, and we have, on Verdugo Road, two mounds, somebody, a contractor, has dumped their cement on Verdugo Road. It's between Glorieta Park and Los Encinos, and they've also dumped an old mattress and starting to collect junk out there now. There's two big apartments, and it really looks rank now, especially with all the weeds and everything that's growing up there. And I also have an island in front of my house, it's between Alpha Road and Los Encinos, divides the two streets. There's a stop sign there, but you'd never know the stop sign's there, because the weeds are taller than the stop sign now. And Mr. Zern is good about coming out, you know, and taking care of this, but it just gets out of hand every once in a while, and I have nothing but praise for Mr. Zern, because he always comes through like a trooper. And if you guys can give him a raise, give him a raise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bob Seer, am I pronouncing that correctly?
It's been seven years since I spoke to you last. Actually, I just spoke to Frank Quintero and Dave Weaver, the city attorney and the city manager. I came before the invasion of Iraq, a week or so before, a couple of weeks before, and as I had told you then, there were 300 cities who signed letters requesting the government to wait and see if it was absolutely necessary to invade Iraq. I requested that the city council write a letter similar to that of New York City. New York City requested that the war be stalled for a while, and if you remember, New York City was that city back east where they had that problem with those wandering airliners in 2001. It's been seven years since I came before you. A lot has happened in that time. Most of my time's been taken tending to my sister and my mother, who have died since then. If you remember, you probably don't, but if you were to be able to remember, you would know that approximately 80% of everything that I predicted about the war has come true and continues to come true. I had provided each of the city councilmen a documentary, a VCR, that's George Elango it was, about U.S. foreign intervention. I wasn't presuming that you didn't know about U.S. intervention, because I'm sure you know a lot, but almost no Americans know anything about U.S. intervention, and you can try this out on your friends. Ask them, "How many countries have been bombed by the United States since World War II? How many countries have been bombed by the United States since World War II?" It's about 30 so far. Ask them, "How many foreign bases we have?" About 700. Ask them, "How many bases foreign countries have on our soil?" Zero. Ask them, "What percentage of the military's weaponry is made in the United States?" The answer, 75% of all military weapons are made here, although we're 5% of the world's population. That's 15 times more than we should be making. You can check these out with your congressman if you don't believe me. This is an interesting current one. Try this one out. What does it cost per year, per soldier, to be deployed in Iraq? You can check this with your congressman, the amount is $390,000 per man. $1,083 per day, per man, to be in Iraq. According to my calculation, that's enough to send 250 students through Glendale College. Another question you might ask, what will the American public pay for the Iraq war? According to Joseph Stiglitz, a former Nobel Prize-winning economist, his estimate is $3 trillion. So, every single American living right now, over his lifetime, will pay $10,000 for the war. That's a fact, it can't be disputed, when you compute the interest and the cost of the medical and psychological help for the veterans. Not my figures, I don't pull this out of the air. What my next prediction is, and which I'm not coming to you to write any letters on, is the upcoming war in Iran. It's almost certain that we'll be invading Iran, because many people have been convinced they have nuclear weapons, which they do not. I want to tell you a brief story about a woman who was interviewed during the Iraq-Iran war in the 80s. PBS was interviewing her in front of her home, and on the masonry wall in front of her home were five ceramic tiles with pictures of young males on them. The journalist asked, "Who are these men?" She says, "These are my sons that died in the Iraq war, in the war with Iraq." She lost five sons in the war with Iraq. They ask her, "You must feel a lot of regret and remorse about that." Her words, "And as God as my witness were, my only regret is that I did not have five more to give to Allah." You couldn't go over, you could travel this country, end to end, you couldn't find one woman that would say, "I wish I had more sons to give to the war in Iraq." I know that you people have a certain political perspective, you have a certain job, and you represent the people. When I asked you to write the letter, 75% of the people were in favor of the war, 25% against. It's flipped, 25% are for the war, 75 against. I'll be coming and speaking to you on this matter and similar matters in the future, and thank you very much for your attention. Mr. Mayor, do we have his name?
Yes, we do. We have his name and his address. Noel Petter, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Njerian, council members and staff, I'm here again before you, this time primarily to find out when you will have a hearing on the turf. After speaking with Mr. Njerian about a month ago after council meeting, he indicated to me that it would be within two months. Well, actually, it was more than a month ago, and so I'm figuring that should be July. Now, there's a problem I'm beginning to have now, that between the fact that Neighborhood Services has put great pressure on me to complete something between now and the end of this month, and it's getting so hot that you can't really plant anything without consuming considerable water to keep it alive, whatever it is, even a cactus would need a lot of water to get started on that hard soil. It's not a fertile soil, which is what Verdugo Canyon has had for years because of floods and so forth in the history. But my concern is, can we have the hearing in time, or can you give Sam Engel in Neighborhood Services a request to hold off a little longer, so that I can wait till you do this, just to get the final decision on your part?
And we'll address that issue at the conclusion of all the speakers.
All right. Oh, another question I'd like to ask, this has nothing to do with me, but I'm observing all the time in Glendale sofas, mattresses, dressers, and everything in front of homes, and they're just put out on the parkway. And isn't, couldn't there be an ordinance, or do you have an ordinance, to stop people from doing that? There's many of them I see every day, all over town. I'd like to see some ordinance that would reprimand those people or keep them from doing it, because they're just throwing their trash out, mirrors, dressers, beds, sofas. They're old, and they're weathered, and they are junk, and they should pay to have them removed, or take them out themselves. Rent a trailer or something and haul them away. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Margaret Hammond.
E.V. Mayor Njerian, welcome back, and council members. And I'd like to talk about our city pension plans. I've been doing some thinking since last week, when the city council agreed with the firefighters' union to a new contract. I propose a different solution. Let the firefighters have their retirement at age 50, but change the percentage back to 2.5% at 50, rather than the agreed 3% at 55. This would reduce the amount the city has to pay out for the pension obligations in the near future. This will also ensure that our firefighters are in top physical condition, and we can attract very good people. Council members, put your trust in our fire chief. Let him manage by eliminating the constant manning policy of our fire stations. We do not have major fires or crises every day of the week. For example, I asked my local fire station to do an inspection of my property. A fire truck and four firefighters came to my house. Why? In years past, only one firefighter came to my house for the same inspection. Like Glendale Police Department, I believe the Glendale Fire Department needs to change their staffing model. Fire stations should be manned on demand, rather than constant manning method. Having constant 64, 66 firefighters always on duty is a luxury the city can no longer Managing by on-demand lets our battalion commanders adjust fire personnel based on daily need. Simply by changing the fire personnel policy, the city will generate an immediate savings of several million dollars by reducing over time. I also propose the Glendale Police Department give the same 2.5% at 50, and not 3% at 55 pension plan. Furthermore, why not have a shift swaps with our safety personnel like they have in other cities? Glendale Management Association and the Glendale City Association, Employees Association, should have the same 2.2%, excuse me, at 55 of the present system of 2.5, instead of, I'm sorry. 2% at 55 plan will not bankrupt the city and show fiscal responsibility for both parties. The economy has changed, and government pension plans must change too. What the city council and firefighters' union did last week was not a fix, they just kicked the can down the road. I also propose council amend the city charter that would limit utility rates to 3% per year. Additional rate increases would require voter approval. Furthermore, any city bonds over $10 million would require the approval of all the city voters. This, council members, would go a long way in putting our house in order. Our children, our grandchildren, will thank you, you did the right thing. Again, this may be an opportunity to fix our broken system, if you choose to. Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond?
Good evening, again, Your Honor, members of council, staff, and members of the audience. Number one, I'm going to say real quickly, the city seal, I'm still looking for it, and would like to know when and where it will appear again, the beautiful one that was on the back wall, which was a gift from a city. And also, the pictures of the men and women who served for Glendale altogether for 100 years. I think they were, they're important to our city, the history of our city, history. Anyway, the other thing is a horrendous traffic problem that has erupted from the work that is being done on Chevy Chase. I know it's going to be very nice, but it's been going on for a long time. The street is horrendously torn up, there's no parking on either side of the street, and it's, for this area, it's just a horrendous mess. I practically have to go over to LA to be able to go up Chevy Chase or over to Verdugo, and I'm hoping that when it's finished, it's going to be great, but in the meantime, there doesn't seem to be any plan. The traffic going down Adams is up almost to Colorado, they're going south, almost to Colorado, and I've had to go around and snakey around to finally get to the, tonight, to the meeting. And I know it's going to be great in the long run, but nevertheless, I think in the meantime, it is terrible. You have no idea how awful. I couldn't even get off my hill. They keep closing the streets up and not, I don't know if we're supposed to get a helicopter to get off there, or what. I hope not. Had enough of them with Michael Jackson's service. Now, the bulky item thing, yes, there are more bulky items appearing. I don't quite remember the number, Mr. Zern, what is it that I should be announcing for people to pick up?
818-548-3916.
Thank you. So, don't just look at those items sitting there, pick up your phone and call on them. You're a citizen, it's your duty to keep the city up, it's quality of life for everybody, and that's what you should do. Don't call me, don't call anybody else, call the bulky item pickup. And the other thing, of course, is, one of my things is, I do object to paying the trash bin fees, which are just gone up to 58-something, and especially since my tenants are paying those fees. If I didn't pay the trash bin fees, they would still have their trash picked up. So, I'd like to know what happens to that $58 that I pay and all the other apartment owners in Glendale. That's great. If we all quit paying it, what would happen then? What would happen then if all the apartment owners quit paying that trash bin charge? Okay, and, one more quick thing that I've come across, that people out there, seniors, banks are charging $12. They call it that, well, if you overdraft, you'll have, you won't get charged for it. They slapped it on my account without even asking me, and I said, "What do you think you're doing?" And they said, "Oh, we thought we were doing a service for you." And not only did they charge me the $12, but then the next month, they made a penalty because I hadn't paid the $12. So, you can imagine my conversation. You know, the other one that's really bad, and people don't realize it, you have, you know, people have small savings bank accounts, which I have with a foothill group that I've been with for almost 50 years. I suddenly got my statement, I hadn't, you know, they only send it out every three months, here they are. I get .37 cents on my 500-and-some-dollar savings, I only keep it because of sentimental reasons, I was an original person in that foothill credit union, .37 cents a month, and they're charging me $2 a month for an inactive fee, and they tell me, "And if you don't hurry up and send me $10 to make it active, the state will come and take your account." Now, I checked with another bank, and they said, "That is not true, that as long as that .37 cents is going in there, that the account is active." So, I'm warning people out there, and the one person that I spoke to said, "Well, her brother's whole account was taken up with these inactive fees." I said, "To heck with that, if the banks are getting that." I said, "Are you getting that, or the state?" So, I'm warning all my friends out there, if you have savings accounts, large or small, take a look at them. If you haven't used them for a year or more, they will be slapping you with $2 a month fees, and people don't realize that. And I guess, as we get older, we don't always pay attention, and I think that would be a good idea to have a look at your accounts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other cards for oral communications. Let me open it up to colleagues. Ms. Friedman?
Just in response to Mr. Hooker and his concern about people dumping concrete and other things, if there's an area where they really are dumping regularly, can we do some kind of a sting, or put a camera up and catch whoever's doing that? Maybe we can look into that, and if it really is that some builder or landscaper's dumping stuff all the time, let's go, let's get them.
We've done it before, Ms. Friedman.
So, maybe we can, you guys can... And there is absolutely an ordinance about not leaving stuff around.
Mr. Raymond?
By the way, on that, similarly on that note, sometimes, people have put things out and have made arrangements for bulky item pickup, and sometimes neighbors see that and think they're just dumping on their curb, when in fact, they're putting it out on the curb for bulky item pickup, which they've arranged with the city. So, it doesn't hurt to call and find out. So it doesn't hurt to call and find out.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we have, with regard to Mr. Petter, I know we've been talking about artificial turf for a while. Do we have this on the agenda for a future?
It will be on the agenda as part of a list of zoning code amendments. We have assembled the zoning code advisory group, and we, I do not think the list will be completed before the end of the summer, which would require going to the planning commission first for a lot of discussion. We expect this particular topic to have a lot of discussion on the pros and the cons of artificial turf. We're assembling a lot of data. If you check the internet, you'll notice there's a ton of data on both sides of the issue, and we expect that the planning commission and the zoning code advisor group would want us to give them all the information necessary. Also, we think the artificial turf, we wanted it to stay along for a period of time to see it, how it responds to the, both types of weather, so the comments that we receive from the community will be well-understood. So we, in response to Mr., to the speaker, it will not be within a month. It will probably not be within two months. It'll be why, longer, and we expect the planning commission to be interested in a lot more discussion. As far as Mr. Engel was putting off, the comments, that unfortunately, we cannot do that. This has been going along for a while, and the speaker's option is not only to put in some material that will require a lot of water. We have other options that we have presented that could be done immediately. That's really all I can say.
Okay. And not to get into that particular case, because I don't know the entire story. You say that there's an option not to fully landscape. I mean, if the intention, obviously, there's a possibility that there may be a positive change for the artificial turf.
There is a possibility.
And if that's a choice, if that's a preference of this individual, is there something he can do in the meantime that would not require a complete commitment or significant investment in the yard if, as we said, if there's a chance that artificial turf is permitted?
Yes, and those options have been presented to him, and Public Works has even assisted in providing materials. Yes. And we will be available to repeat and reiterate what those options might be.
Perhaps he might not be clear on that, so if you could reiterate that.
We will be. Happy to.
Mr. Draymond?
Mr. Mayor, I just can't sit quietly anymore with regard to this issue. And I know your questions are not, well, you said it yourself, you may not be familiar with sort of the history of this particular situation, but this has been an ongoing deal for a very long time. This has been an issue where the neighbors in this area have been complaining and complaining and complaining with a yard that is a mess. This has to do with the city bending over backwards to help this particular individual, even to the point where we have provided mulch for him to put down in an attempt to try to help him meet the nature of our city ordinances and the refusal to do that. In the meantime, the people in that neighborhood, in that area and on that block, are treated to a quality of life that includes a house that has no landscaping. And this is not just a week ago or a month ago. This has been going on for a very long time. What Mr. Petter is trying to do, in my opinion, is simply run the clock out. And we knew this the last couple of times he was here, and that's exactly what we were talking about. I'm not even going to get into the merits of what I think the merits are or are not of artificial turf. That's a debate for another time, when everything is presented and all of that. But in the meantime, this individual knows absolutely full well that there's a whole array of landscaping that he can put in, that is low maintenance, low consumption of water, drought tolerant, et cetera. He just refuses to do it. He wants artificial turf, and that's it. And right now, right now, our ordinances don't provide for that, and they haven't provided for that for some time. He knew that at the time. He just took out all the turf, took out his lawn, and tried to force the issue. It's as simple as that.
I'm just saying, please remind him of the obligations that the code requires.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Friedman?
One last thing about Ms. Hammond's comment about Chevy Chase. I know that when we're doing construction, things can get hairy, and I know that no one wants to perpetuate that, but let's just be sure that they do have access, you know, on that hill. I would hate for something to happen, there to be some emergency, and people be trapped and not be able to get down. So let's at least make sure that if there's other ways people can take, that it's clearly posted, so they know what the detour is. Okay? Thanks.
Do you have anything else? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move adjourned.
Second. We are adjourned.